Forty-sixth Regular Session, on the Twenty-eighth City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the singing of invocation, Honorable Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinerang, the Cagayan di Oro March.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, thank you Lord for gathering us this afternoon, which you charted. Thank you for the honor of having us, the members of the Twenty-eighth City Council here present with you to perform a task for you. Stay with us as we seek to do the job you want us to do for the people Cagayan di Oro. Grant us the patience and wisdom to comply with these obligations in accordance with your plan. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please be seated. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, our friends from media, our guests who are here today who are watching our session for today. Mayhapun, councilors. And mayhapun, satanan. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, on official business; Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimi Rose P. Moreno, on official business; Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go-King, Honorable Jose P. P. S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Esgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, on official business; Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay president, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. There is quorum, Madam Presiding Officer.
Quorum is your vice certified. Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Attorney Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bebeto Rodriguez, members of the Twenty-eighth City Council, people in the media, visitors, guests, and those who are watching us in their respective social platforms. Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session of the City Council on July 23rd.
Majority Floor Leader, if I may, I'm sorry, but I forgot it was the birthday of Councilor George Go-King. If we will sing a happy birthday song for him, to be led by Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Uh-huh. Sige.
Oh. Sorry kayo, Majority Floor Leader.
Oo. Yes.
Please rise.
Na email na. Na email. Anyway... Namatong bagong at chipopulis, so tumantan eh para sundunta. So, for our community singing, it would be the birthday song for Councilor PCL Chapter President and Regional Chairman, Councilor George Go-King, with a tune coming from Councilor Bernie Espasia. I just led the facilitation.
Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday, happy birthday!
Yay!
Happy birthday to you!
What's that?
Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday, happy birthday! Happy birthday to you!
Yay!
Okay.
Salamat, Vice Mayor Beboto, and to my colleagues, darha salamat.
Okay, let's proceed, Majority Floor Leader.
Wala ba't dumayabag?
Medyo, medyo.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous Regular Session of the Council on July 10, 2023.
Any second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is adjourned.
I also move for approval of the minutes.
Any second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is adjourned.
Madam Chair, before we proceed with our Special Reports portion, we have a note from our Vice Secretary, and we are happy to have the presence of our new Police Director, Police Director Pagan di Oro Colonel Radam, who intimated to us through the members of the City Council that he would pay a courtesy call to the Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, and the members of the City Council as part of the tradition that if there will be a new City Police Director, he will be here for us to render his courtesy, to give us his courtesy presence report. So with that, Madam Chair, may I request that Police Colonel Radam be recognized.
Okay.
And may I move for the suspension of the rules.
Any second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is adjourned. We'd like to welcome Colonel Ramon Radam.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and the members of the august body.
Good afternoon.
It's nice to be back. It was almost ten years when I left the city of Cagayan di Oro and rendered my service as PNT in the province of Bukidnon. By the way, Madam Chair, I am Police Colonel Salvador N. Radam, born in the province of Bukidnon, San Fernando, Bukidnon. But previously, I lived in the city of Cagayan, Santuninho, Lapasan, Cagayan di Oro City. Then last 2021, I transferred my residence to, again to the province of Bukidnon, but now, gango libuna Bukidnona. Medyo do old agitsas Cagayan. I entered service in 1996, joined the PNT in 1999. After that, I worked, my first assignment was the Chief Plans of the Regional Operations and Plans Division of Regional Office Ten in the Chipopulis of Opul. Back to Operation Officers in Misamis Oriental PPO in a short period for Asaan Municipal Police Station because I was bound for schooling at that time. After my schooling, I rendered duty here in the city of Cagayan di Oro, first in the Administrative Office in the Second Agora Police Station, then Intelligence. My last assignment here is the, again, the Intelligence branch of Cagayan di Oro City. Prior to my assignment again in Cagayan di Oro, I was the Regional Chief of the Police and Security, or Regional Police and Security Protection Unit under the PSPG in this region. Oo nakabasi mo ang hepe sa ata farmhouse. Then I was transferred to RP SPUNAN, Regional Police and Security Protection Unit, Samwangga, last November. Then last, my order was July 11, I was assigned back to the Argentine, and then July 13, designated as Officer in Charge, Cagayan di Oro City Police Officer.
Okay, thank you very much, Colonel. So, I will go into have a photo op. Any more, any question?
Maybe some queries from the members of the City Council.
Yes, any queries? Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith, then Councilor George Go-King.
Madam Chair, atong tinahon ng VC Mayor, Joselyn Beboto Rodriguez, ang atong mga bisita, ang atong bagong hepe sa kapulisan, dinis atong dakbayan, atong katawan sa dakbayan sa Cagayan di Oro maupay. Kinilang, Colonel Radam, mga akong mga pangutana kay, nakita na ko epektibo man to sa imong gisundan ng hepe sa kapulisan, dinis atong dakbayan katong, na ay mga gepangplastar ng mga kapulisan sa pipila kabahay sa takdakbayan. Naaden sila tulad ng tawag, na sila sa mga kinid sa dalat. Ang akong pangutana, kung padayunon ba 'yung yapon himo sa imong pagdumala karoon sa kokpo, una na ang pangutana. Ok, ikaduha, parayon ba 'yung yapon tong imong mobile patrol, din ako mismo nakasakay, nakasaksi, gugon saon hinyo ang paghimo sa inyong mobile patrol. Darha salamat.
Yes, Madam Chair. For the first question, parayon to, Madam Chair, it's a question parayon 'yung yapon to. Ako osbon sa mga payag, na everything na gihimo ni Sir Manja, na kita tong mayo, ato pampalambuon. Oldumay ilisan ang pangalan kay may, pero moriya po 'yung pagmagia'tong pagabuhaton. Sumakala mo sir na, kung unse na himo ni Sir Manja, atong panagmoton macontinue kinin, ato pag-i-enhance oban sa, supur na sa tuwang mga kaobanas sa kapulisan sa Cagayan.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor George Go-King. You are recognized.
Darha salamat, Vice Mayor Beboto Rodriguez, to my colleagues. This is not a question, but I would like to welcome my brother Colonel Salvador to Cagayan di Oro and as a new OIC or permanent, permanent, and abroad.
So, Madam Chair, I am still the OIC considering wala panagawa sa ang resulta isu PB sa kamkrami. After that, ako po lima full pistang City Director.
So, welcome to Cagayan di Oro, brat. And we'd like also to thank our brother Colonel Mandea for the outstanding job. Darha salamat.
Salamat, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilor George Go-King. Yes, you are recognized. Councilor Ian Atchas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sir, previous punong barangay- barangay puerto.
Yes, sir.
Na may project, nakuip project in my time, police station somewhere in Procoso, Puerto, Upper Park. If you observe, na ano na siya din, na karoon duol sa kanang alaing merkado. So, na police station din ano, pwede ba maka-apply ang usa ka barangay- ugduha ka police station? Kay, kana siya nga building, ay reserved that building intended for police. Karoon, ang problema kay, wala na ipulis. Kay, one of my problems during my time as a punong barangay, ang among police station to asasintro. Then, na mga vehicular accident, mga kanang reklamo sa mga residente, layokayo ang police station. So, naghimuumiog, my intention at that time is a police station. Karoon sir, wala na ipulis. Pwede bang himuon na lang gitsya o police station?
Madam Chair, ang paghimot to's police station, it is long, ato panang i-request sa kamkrami for the approval. Like Police Station Number Ten, do we kisan na approve? Where in fact, if I'm not mistaken, until now, ang budget ano sa police station ten, say lang himu is, wala pa kisyan na fix. So, nagre-rely pa 'yung yapon siya sa other resources, na gikuhaan lang, allocate lang sila o budget para police station ten. So, our best remedy for the Puerto is we'll put additional personnel para magmanja. Actually sir, sinong agian sa una, nabigay na personnel, pero karoon mukasurkat ng mga kuspi kas dalat, hindi na gumaga agida. So, atong panigamotan na sir, nga mabutang ato balik o police stations, kay, I mean personnel, matawag na to siya nga, kanang dilipot siya matawag sa tila, parang siya o community outpost. There is another thing for that. So, matitingin himu na to. Para nga kanang mga person, ang mga tao po sa mga lumulupi po sa unahan na boundary na sa ala'y o sa Puerto, at least masibisyon po na to. Parang kamuton to na sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Ian Atchas. Yes, any more comment? Question, yes, Councilor. Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Okay, as I always say during the courtesy call of new appointed, newly appointed City Directors, that peace and order is one of the problems in this country. Wala teingong kate problemas sa peace and order. Nagitpermina. They wala'y, sudad nga wala'y problemas sa peace and order. And I know that there will be challenges facing the new structure, new City Director. Pero, hangamo lang hangiyo sa atong City Director, ay wala 'yung trabaho. Be good at your job because the City Council will be crawling on your back kung pananlitan na maglujaluya kamudya. This is important because the city is a booming city. Cagayan di Oro is a booming city. It's the center of economic activity on the June 10, and one of the basic reason why we have this kind of reputation is because of the peace and order. Nakinanglan g'yo ng atong kanang mitinahon, kung mai manugali ng atong kanang mitinahon, kung dunay mga problema, kinanglang atong sulbaro nderichyo. That would be an advice to our new City Director, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, so, we'd like to congratulate again.
Yes, sir. Advice accepted, Chair, and we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, photo ops. One minute. One minute lang. Ano 'yung boundary ho? Pwede manggo't? Pwede ita, Colonel? Tapos, sagadini, madika sibugamay, Colonel? Sagadini, madika? Ali, ali, tepat, sibugamay sagadini. Okay, sagadini ang uban sa'yo. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Darha salamat.
Thank you. Okay, session resume. Let's proceed, Councilor, Majority Floor Leader.
Okay, so, with that now, Madam Chair, we go to the Special Report portion. I move to lift the suspension of the rules.
Suspension lifted.
We go to now to the Special Report portion of our session. I will be rendering a special report, Madam Chair. This is about the annual audit report of the Commission Audit Regional Director, dated May 31, 2023. And after me, then Councilor Nakaya, who will be reporting on Berlin Urban Nature Act. So...
Ikaw mauna, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much. Ako may nauna.
Okay, sige. It's okay. It's okay.
Ako may nauna, partner. So, Madam Chair, this is an important audit report.
So, Madam Chair, this is an important audit report that was given us, copies were given to us, I think as far as, as June 26, 2023. And it contains a lot of observations. This is not an indictment against any public official, but this is an observation made by the Commission on Audit, which is a constitutional body, about transactions that were undertaken years before 2023. Now, the audit report contain around 300 plus pages, but I will just focus on the, the significant findings of our City Auditor and the Regional City, uh, Commission on Audit Region 10 Office. I will go directly to, uh, number 15 of the audit, audit observation. Because all the other observations, I think, are more or less administrative, administrative issues, which could be complied with by just merely, uh, doing what the Commission on Audit wants us to do, or wants the, the City Audit, City Treasurer, City Counting, City Budget Office to do, to comply with the requirements of the financial expenditures. But let's go to number 15, because this is an issue which has been discussed in the media, talk about, uh, by people, by Kaganons. And so, I think we have to do some, to this report. Number 15, 37 infrastructure projects were not completed within the specified contract, contract period amounting to 211 million 933 pesos and 53 cents, three of which were reported mobilized, but found out not yet started during the actual inspection, contrary to the provisions set forth in the contract agreements and various provisions from the revised IRR of Republic Act 9184, thus depriving the intended beneficiaries with immediate and maximum utilization and liquidated damages, at the same time causing inconvenience to the public concern. Now, in my opinion, this statement here in number 15 refers to contracts before the administration of Mayor Cleric's OI. Because this audit report speaks of transactions that happened in 2022 or before, and it ends on December 2022. The administration of Mayor Cleric started in the middle part of 2022. So therefore, obviously, this refers to before the assumption of office of Mayor Cleric. I'm not saying that there's something wrong. I'm just saying that this is a lot of money, which has to be explained. Why, in accordance with the observation of the City Auditor, mobilization funds were already paid, so it must be based with records. But why until now, the construction of these alleged uh, infrastructure projects, when not it started? What happened? Where is the wrong here? What happened? Now, it is important, Madam Chair, that this has to be explained to us. We are the holder of the force, that is the function of City Council. We are the holder of the force, Congress is also the holder of the force. We, we determine what money that will be given to whom and to, and for what purpose. We are the, we have the power to hold the funds. And since we have the power to hold the funds, we have also the power to disball, to, to, to authorize the expenditure of the funds. And because of that, Madam Chair, we have the right to review what happened. That is our oversight function. Congress is also the oversight function. We have the same function dunaketekok, pariyas nga, nga trabaho sa Congresso. Ngangatong trabaho din lamang sa pagka-prob sa mga proyekto. Sa disborsmen sa mga kwarta sa gubirno sa katauhan, kun din, obligasyon taos apag tanau, nga kining kwarta nga atong gi-authorized, nagamit siya sakto. We are, we are, we are accountable to this funds. And we cannot just say nga, di maniya mtrabaho ang pagda, ang pagbantay ni ni mga proyekto, kay, tama na may misapproval, no? That is a wrong perception. So, Madam Chair, kanilang, kanilang, kanilang aspeto sa audit report. Ang gusto, personally gusto ako, may, I'm not saying that somebody here has done some wrongdoing, no? Wala kita mag-ingon, nga na salat, ang ato lang i, kini gawa sa magining report, then explain why. Ngano, daw, i-specific, unsa kining mga, mga kontrata, unsa kining mga proyekto, na dawat na ang mobilization fan, wala daima, wala ma masugdi. Unya, five years na nga trabaho, hatu karuwa mahuman, na impasan na sa ilang, na impas na pagbayad, unya hangtu karun, wala lang giapun mahuman. Si problema, kulak, sumuka na. And, and in line with that, Madam Chair, this is just an instruction to the Committee on Publico. Ayuan hinyo na nga trabaho sa Committee on Publico. Give us a report on this. Give us a report on this, within three weeks from now. We have to put a timetable. Kayo sayo, may mahatag na ni dito sa usa ka committee ba, na limutan na po dayon. So, let us not make that a habit, na kuning asain ka na'to, ato din limut-limutan. I hope this will be acted upon.
Dagang limtanon.
Huh?
Daghan kay limtanon.
Mas musafir kitag amnesia, so. Now.
How much money is involved by Majority of Floor Leader? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get.
211 million.
211.
Kanilang, kanilang ane, 211 million, I'm not talking about the others. Inayun talan i.
So many, many to say.
Let us simplify this, kay kung ato, basig babukok ang committee ba sa, sa kadaghan na trabaho.
So many to say mobilization fund, okay, given, mobilization. And then, another fund, when it's not even started? When you said that nahuman na, ugbayad, yet wala'y project ni Barog?
Tulukka proyekto, which were funded by this 211 million, were reported to be mobilized.
Yes, mobilize.
Pasok na ni Madam Chair, na dawat na ang 10% or 15%?
Yeah, mobilization.
Ah, 15%, sa total value sa contract. Pero, nilabay na ang pinaketuig, hatu karun, wala masugdi.
Yes, pero wala na bayran, tibu ka mount. Wala pa, okay, segilang, okay, anyway, okay.
So, para nga balik, kinsa katung wala'y sala, ma kita nga wala'y sala. Kita sumuwal salan, ma kita nga salan, kay di sumisay kayo nga, basig din na itaw diya karun, wala'y sala, unya tunggu dani, na tagaan hinu sagjala. So, I hope this will be investigated by the proper committee, and the proper committee here would be the, well, my line, ang Committee on Infra, and also the Committee of Councilor Aland Lim.
Finance.
Which is the finance.
Okay.
So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Majority of Floor Leader, yes, Councilor Michael Zeno, you have the floor.
Good afternoon to you, Madam Presiding Officer, Honorable Joselyn Bebop Bautista Rodriguez, and of course to the 20th City Council, Prince Menomedia, and fellow Kaganons, may hapon ka na'tong tanan. That is a good report, no, coming from our Majority Floor Leader, on issue of the, uh, uh, observation coming from the Commission on Audit, no? Based on that 211 million pesos 933 and 53 cents, which is composed of 37 projects, that 211 million pesos is coming from the 20% Development Fund, no? Ako lang gusto iexplicar, or masabtan sa tuwang mga namino karoon. Ang 20% Development Fund that comes from the Irapa Kanyato, Internal Revenue Alotment. Now karoon, munasyang ginatawag na National Tax Allocation. Kanang 20% Development Fund, direktamente na nga gikan sa Irap, 20% niya na, mo padulong good sa, kanin ginatawag na'to 20% Development Fund. But sabdun nga kanatuig na ganay 20% Development Fund. Kanin 20% Development Fund, kung ikumpara ni monisya sa, uh, general lugar nga, uh, budget, mas mauna pag ma-implementing 20% Development Fund, kumpara atong sa, tong naabay puno ka pangitaon general, kay kanin siya, specific yun siya, for Development Fund. Now, it is very important nga, supposed to be, kanina mga projects, di yun ma-delay. Now, ang una na ko na matikda na Madam Presiding Officer, before ni, ay in fact, isulat man po sa Kuwa Report nga, wala po'y prior nila nga, ay bin prior years nga nakainvestigate regarding sa 20% Development Fund. It's just now. Una nga nakita na ko, Madam Presiding Officer, is that ay harapuntamakadawat og reklamo report, kung na ay magreklamo or na ay observation. Kay even in their projects sa City Government, wala gay report na gipaabot sa tuwang committees. Mas mayo pa ang project sa DPWH, kena ay gipahigayon nga information, namunan ni ang mga proyekto. And yeah, that's true, ikaduha nga punto, katung isulti ni Attorney Ed Cabanlas kaganina, ato Majority Floor, nga na ay tulukka proyekto nga nakadawat nagmobilization. But sabdun na na, Madam Presiding Officer, before ka makadawat si mo mobilization, naana dito ang mga equipments needed, og naka-start na gitga. No, at least ay makita dito nga naka-start na ka, and you could get already the mobilization. However, based sa report sa Kuwa, wala sila'y nakita dito nga mga equipments, or nasugdan, permiro, wala'y nakita. Munay, una nga problema. Ikaduha, ingkining mga proyekto, 2011 pa, at 2021 pa, uh, sa previous administration, previous administration, nga, nilahus na siguro ang uban sa calendar days, based on actual works, Madam Presiding Officer. Kay before na, dawat on sa kontratista, Madam Presiding Officer, klaro man na kung pilaka calendar days, pilaka adlaw, pagdawat ni mo sa kontrata. And ang nag-ingon ng ato ang Republic Act 9184, or the procurement law, negative 15 slippage shall be considered default. Munay atong pangutana karoon, kung nag-negative 15 na siya, nga no man na, nga wala pa, gipaabot na'to nga nagdefault na dapat ang contractor. Kay for sure, any Madam Presiding Officer, na agi inanan ng instances. Let's say for example, sa bahay tulugan dito sa barangay Dansuliho, nga nakabot sa tuwang committee ba. Nagundang ang ilahang pagimplement, 2021 pa, up until now, wala paggiapun, uh, gibalikan sa contractor. So, salamat kayo, kagi forward ni sa atong committee ba. And in fact, naana ipahigayon nga committee meeting karong July 26, kay karoon nga week daw, full naman ang schedule. On July 26, no, uh, mag-start na tao, ga deliberate, Madam Presiding Officer, magetag information. And paningkamuta na'to sa atong committee ba, nga kaniputanan ng mga proyekto nga gibutang sa audit observation memorandum gikan sa Kuwa, mabisitahan po't bismo sa committee. Para makita yun ato, ma, masuta na'to kung ang gi-report dito sa project engineer, o ang resident engineer, tinuod ba? Let's say for example, nakahuman na 150 meters, pag actual dito 100 meters sa DI. Mupunay usang nga nakalati dito sa audit observation report, nga supposed to be, kana nga works, nahuman na, pero pagabot dito, wala DI. And munah, ato ang paggalantaho, no, will not, sa basis sa mga information nga atong nakuha karoon, na naman tay kakakita nga, asa dapit, gakaistangko, o unsa gitmo'y dahilan. But salamat kayo nga gihatag ni karoon, no, with the help of course of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation, that we will, really, we look into this. Kay di na tamusugot nga, uh, mainani paghihapon ang sunod na mga proyekto, denis sa dakbayan, Madam Presiding Officer. Kay kung di maginimuni ma-implement karoon mahuman, Madam Presiding Officer, magdugang ni siya o trabaho, sa sunod na po ng tuig sa 2023, kinaan naman po iset of 20% Development Fund. And wala ba 'yan nagadaghan ng atong project engineers o resident engineer, Madam Presiding Officer? Munah nga, kinahanglan yun siya pagka-sulbaron, para once and for all, ma-kurek, ang dapat ma-kurek, Madam Presiding Officer. And mapangitahan o pamaagi unsaon ipagsulban ni sa inanin ng mga problema. But for sure, uh, atong testingan siguro, Majority Floor, nga na atay mga kontatista, nga di maka-explain pag gi, nga nong nadilatar na pagayo, ang ilahang proyekto nga ipresona ng grata na'to denis sa dakbayan sa Kaganon. That they are not welcome anymore to, in the city of Kaganon. Considering nga, nga nong wala man na nila mahuman ng mga proyekto sa pilaka adlaw. Kay supposed to me, Madam Presiding Officer, gi, gi, isulti po dani ang malakbitan ko na lang, ang kining punto nga liquidated damages. Under Republic Act 9184, kanin liquidated damages, naman ay specific days, sa calendar days. Mula hus galikan na nga wala ni munah, nahatag na supposed to be nga, nga project mahuman. One tenth of every one percent, every day, ang counting na na, Madam Presiding Officer. That's liquidated damages. But kung maabot na ka, negative 15% sa mong slippage, muto kung isulti kaganina, dapat gi-default na na ang proyekto. Wala na ipanahon nga mangulekta pa ang contractor, tungod kay default na na siya, naana sa atong balaud, Madam Presiding Officer. Og munah atong pangutan on karoon, kung na-implement ba na. No, kay para once and for all, masampulan yun ato ng inanin ng mga, uh, problema denis atuas uh, pag-implement sa infrastructure projects, no, and salamat kayo, Madam Presiding Officer. Uh, I'm just hoping that the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation will help us also to finish this on three weeks' time, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you so much, and.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Councilor Michael Zeno, yes, Councilor Malvern Esparza, you're recognized.
May hapon, Madam Chair, thank you very much, sa atong mga kauban, sa mga kaubang konsial, mga namino karoon. Uh, Madam Chair, ako nagpasalamat nga, nga nag-special report ang atong beloved Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas on this. Ako lang, kuwan ane, Madam Chair, kami, ako personally, as a new legislator, bagong konsial, gusto sa nako yun nga, may bawan kung unsa gitang proseso ane. Tama ang atong reporter, wala tay, gi, gituluan e kung kinsa ang sadan, or nabay tay gitumbok ani. Pero ako mismo, I want also to see ba, nga, when I saw the audit report last week, na kanang nagi klaro nga pictures ba, unsa ding style na nga, for example, ang project, morning nga amount, gibutang dito two-story building, four rooms, tapos pagabot sa actual ground, wala'y second floor, padilipok ka makaiingon nga wala, wala pa nao makagiatu pa na. Tapos usara karun, kanang may ano ba? So, ako also, as a new legislator, I want also to know, kung unsaon ato na, klaro man nga evidensya nga, dilima oh, ang, kuwan sa, unsa ba'y proseso ano, Madam Chair. So, mayaw kay na, nabungat na siyang report, and also, second, Madam Chair, ang atong historian kaganina, infra palanggaling na. Also sa atong Kuwa Report, na asay mga nakabutang derying ang mga fund transfers from other agencies, nga nahulog, na uban dery 2017, na payuban dery 2015.
Are still, are we still on the same topic?
Yeah, yeah, sa Kuwa lang, Mr. Chair.
Meaning, sa infrak?
Dilipan ni infrak, kuwan po ni siya kanang nilahepo na ano.
Make a special report.
Okay, Madam Chair, muli ako nga, I just also want nga.
Yes, do that, you can do that, so that dilita mawala. So, we will focus on the infrastructure for now, then do a special report on that matter, para dilita mawala, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And the worst part is that, uh, there is already mobilization fund, until now, wala ni Barog, wala'y nasugdan, okay? Yes, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, alayong sa atong katiyuan, mangkaha nga ihag na panggubirno, ang ato mangkaha nga suklian na'to ang katauhan sa ilang bagsali, kanato, kay kakuan magkanato ang pagalagad kanila. Ako maayaw nga, napas, ako, na kumpagpasalamat, kagi bungat keni sa special report ni Consial Edgar Cabanlas, ang atong Majority Floor Leader. Apanagkitan ako karoon, isip atong trabaho sa oversight function, sa konceho. Ang ako ng pangutana karoon, gi-refer magkanato sa, sa appropriations, o sa, sa finance, o baka sa committee, sa public works. Ang pangutana karoon. Ang pangutana karoon, unsa man dayon ang atong mapaabot sa ilan, nabay report ilang mahimo, nabay matumbo, nga kinsa ang angayan, nga manubag. Ang ako dilip baka, kung okay lang, kung mahimo, asake mas mayaw nga magtukod, gitao og adhok nga para mag-investigar sa mobali mga butang, para dilinong nga na ay ingon nga, napay mga pangutana nga na nag-naglupad, kabahin sa pagdigayon, sa gi-unsa ba na ang Kua nga Kua Report. Ang ako lang is, kung ibalik na to sa mga komitiba, dilim mo sa pagunsa. Pero, sa ngalan nga ang maubali nga kani komitiba, naglingkod, maubag yapon ang mga membro nga nag-naglingkod ni ini, membro sa ni agi bali nga konceho, dilip baka mas mayaw, para nga wala nag-ingon mga pangutana, mga pagduda. Asake mas mayaw, nga dilin lang ibalik sa ilang mga komitiba, kung dilim magmug na kita og adhok nga komitiba, aron sa pagtanaw sa mga butang. Ngakabahin sa gi-report sa Koa. Ang ako lang halii sa pagka-karoon, kena may gi-bungat dito sa Koa Report, nga 37 ka mga proyekto na den tulog, nga matupang naan ako noy mobilization, pero sa pag-ahando, wala man di ay maski isa pakalansang ang nagasto or nahimo bali sa mga kontatista. So ang ako, amulo ng atong team, maskituod nga wala tay labot niya na, ang ako kay naghiimo na kita og team, nga parang magdeterminar para magtumbo kung unsa ka ng 37 ka mga proyekto. Sa pagka-karoon, naan ako'y duda naan ay initial nga feedback sa atong team nga gihimo, unsa kani tulok ang mga proyekto. Pero ang ako lang dinilang, salaktud ka pagkastorya, taman rabata nga i-refer na to sa komitiba, nga appropriations or sa to sa budget, o baka sa kani Committee on Public Works, unsa man dayon ang may tabo, ang akong pangutana, kinalan ba siya magreport? O magtukod na lang baka taog adhok para mo'y muhatag sa atong report, para wal- mawala ang mga pagduda sa atong katauhan, sa bahin sa mga anumlosong mga mga transaksyon. Code in code, base sa Koa Report. Dagang salamat.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Attorney James Judith. Probably you can decide on that, when the committee ah committee meeting will be ah no started, then you can discuss among yourselves, no? You will be there, Majority Floor Leader, right?
Ah yes, Madam Chair.
Is ya may game of special report, yes?
Let's trust the committees, we created that for that purpose. And ah as I said, we will give them 15 days or three weeks from now to send their report.
Okay.
And ah we will wait, let us cross the bridge when we reach it. And ah of course, all of us is free to attend.
Yes, yes, everybody is welcome to attend.
And you can
And share.
Give some inputs to during the committee hearing.
Yes.
But let's not disturb the, destruct your of the city council. Thank you very much.
Okay, there, thank you very much. So, let's give 15 days, is that 15 days enough, Councilor Michael Seno? Ah three weeks, three weeks, I mean. Is that good enough? Then we will have the report here? So we will know what's going on. Okay lang sa imo, three weeks, three weeks. Okay, Committee on Infrastructure and Finance. Okay, thank you. So our next reporter is Council? Yes, Councilor Ah Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
This is also immediate, Madam Presiding Officer, because our nature is already crying out loud, the manifestation of ah the melting of ah ice and the events that occurred in the several locations. We don't have to mention many, but we can already feel the burden that our mother earth has felt for several decades already. That is why the city government through our city mayor, Mayor Rolando Clarex Uwi, have committed to support the ah Montreal Pledge which was ah held last year. And ah that is in regard to the global biodiversity framework. And ah the Berlin Urban Nature Pact is a an effect to to that pledge, Madam Presiding Officer. And if I may manifest also, in the entire archipelago of the Philippines and all El Giros in 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 the country, only Kagayan de Oro City was identified by the international and global community, particularly the United Nations, to participate as a forefront runner in this ah program for a global biodiversity framework. So, may I read for for public's information, what is Berlin Urban Nature Pact? Because this is not on, this not only ah covers the responsibility and obligation of one committee, which is the Committee on Environment, but it will extend to to all multi-sectoral participation from various committees and for those who love nature and our environment. Especially the Presiding Officer, the Vice Mayor, ah Joseline Rodriguez. I know she ah is an advocate of ah of ah nature. In fact, while she was the Kunung barangay of Nazareth. I comparatively, barangay Nazareth was ah one of the barangays with many ah trees being planted during her term, so.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Ian Mark.
I have personally observed that, Madam Presiding Officer.
Councilor Ian Mark, our green building code?
Yes.
We have also to facilitate our our ordinances, no? That this will not slip?
If I may continue, Madam Presiding Officer?
Yeah, of course, of course.
Thank you. The building, the Berlin Urban Nature for for purposes of information, our cities and local authorities acknowledging the alarming loss of biodiversity as an imminent threat to our urban environment, infrastructures, value chains, economies, as well as to public health and well-being. Because when we talk about nature, is that is does not only talk about nature or the environment, but it also extend farther to the health of the public or the community. Sparring the necessary transformational change globally requires immediate, bold and inspirational action. On the local level, cities and urban regions already play a re a key role in driving local action and are uniquely positioned to step up action to reverse biodiversity loss. The Berlin Urban Nature Pact or Berlin Pact builds on the 2020 Edinburgh Declaration and the 2022 Montreal Pledge and focuses on this implementation of the Conming, Conming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework and renewed plan of action on sub-national government cities and other local authorities for biodiversity for 2021 to 2030. In other words, one decade decade of implementation of this program. We further emphasize that by the biodiversity and climate crisis, together with the health crisis, are deeply interlinked and need to be addressed in an integrated manner as supported by the Berlin Pact. We nominate nature-based solutions that center on biodiversity and human well-being as key element to counter these challenges. We acknowledge that cities represent a unique ecosystem that is fundamental to our health and well-being and which we protect, shape and enjoy. Functioning urban ecosystems help clean our air and water, cool urban heat islands, host biodiversity and support our health and well-being. UNEP 2022. We realize that harmonizing the needs of humans, animals and green spaces is notable challenge in the face of biodiversity, climate and health crisis. We recognize however that integrated approaches for biodiversity management in urban areas offer major opportunities for people and nature to thrive together and exist as good neighbors. We therefore welcome and embrace diverse approaches to urban nature and its conservation. Not only has nature an intrinsic value, it is also the foundation for human life, health and well-being. Last paragraph. Our cities will lead the path towards a nature-positive urban century, that's 2021 to 2030. We jointly commit to the implementation of the following set of key actions by 2030. The key actions build on and carry forward the Edinburgh Declaration and the Montreal Pledge in a process of consultation with an exchange between cities. We will vertically integrate these actions in the national and or regional goals applicable to our cities and local authorities. We're aware of the impact of cumulative local and sub-national action and we therefore assume responsibility to protect biodiversity through taking up leadership in transformative action to secure our liveable, healthy, biodiverse and climate-friendly cities. Our collective efforts will thereby contribute to the goals delineated by parties of the UN CBD COP15 and accelerate their implementation towards sustainable future for our city. May I, may I, Madam Presiding Officer, related to your ah reaction as regards the Green Building Code? We have even listed as few of the targets of this ah of this Berlin Pact on governance and strategies. This would include the Green Building Code which is pending before the ah City Building Office and I will have to discuss with them as regards the Xavier University recommendations to incorporate in the two draft ordinances which was personally authored by this representation on the first part and the second part is that of the Vice Mayor. And education and nature experience, in other words, environment should play a big role now in the education sector, even in campuses. Building and exposing our children to to nature and the effects of ah the loss of ah trees should be incorporated in the educational system. Species and habitats which should also be introduced to all civilians and ah and NGOs for for an active collaboration to implement certain programs that would raise the ah the the increase of ah species, Madam Presiding Officer. Similarly, on the rivers, wetlands, marine ecosystems and water management, urban green infrastructure, trees and forests, this this is also, this is, this ah point has already been introduced in in the recommendation of the Xavier University on the the Green Building Code. The soils, the food, the agriculture and buildings and public space illumination and accountability and engagement reporting and monitoring. Ah we have requested our secretary to furnish copies to all members of the council so that they may know that this not only a a a function of the environment committee, but a function of all those who love the nature and would see that the future citizens of our country as well, particularly in the in Kagayan de Oro City, would have a better place in the future, living with nature, Madam Presiding Officer. My my point i-in making this special report is to to request the respective committees to play a big role in ah in providing legislative agenda, perhaps at a local perspective. And ah if there is a need for for program creation that would enhance our participation in this ah in this Montreal Pledge and ah and Berlin Pact, ah please do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, that was a very good report. So ah we I, yes, okay, Councilor Bernice Sparsha, yes, you recognize, Council Attorney James Judith, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ah, I am so happy, Madam Chair, aning ah special report ah ni my my colleague Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. As the new committee chair of Climate Change, ah Climate Change, Madam Chair, kani magong Germany karoon, sila ang country karoon nga leader sa sustainability. Tibo kalibutan, the benchmarking sila karoon sa Germany. So, as I reviewed on this certain Berlin Urban Nature Pact, nalipay ko kay there are some clauses aning ah pack nga align gayud sa atong Local Climate Change Action Plan, which is muy gi-hatag sa ato sa planning. And ah ah right now, sa committee level, sa Climate Change, munaning historian karoon on how to accelerate, kay ang nakalamay pagi-aning Berlin Urban Nature Pact, napagid siya target yud. So, ang nakalamay, so ma-accelerate na to more, ang atong gusto may tabo, again, sa atong Local Climate Change Action Plan. So ah ah strong, strong akong support ni ni ah Madam Chair and ah tama. Again, on the climate issue, climate change issue, premin ti yun atong problema. Kung sama sa lisod kayo na to munang natataban ta sa mga media nga unsa opagpasabot ni ini, nga kani atong problema sa climate change is really an urgent issue. Kung pwede palang yun mag-declare na kita do, nag-pending pa man ang ako ang ah ang akong ordinas ni ini nga, ang Kagayan de Oro, kailangan na yun ato i-declare nga climate change emergency. Kay the more, kay kung kani, kung other cities ilan ang nabuhat, ato ning buhatong para mas mapush na to ang atong Local Climate Change Action Plan. Munah na, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Bernice Sparsha, yes, Attorney James Judith, Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, ako akong pagpasalamat kang Konsial Ian Mark Nakaya nga nabungat niya ang Berlin Urban Pact, kani dinisawanan sa tong konceho. Ang ako lang mga pangutana, or pangutana is kabahin sa sa gipangabod-abod bali nga literature ni Konsial Ian Mark Nakaya. Labinadya ah talunak ang inyong atsion, labinadya sa tudling 78, 79, 80, sa panit quatro sa mga literature, nag sulte. Na Berlin Pact signatories will meet once a year to share good practices, provide annual updates of their implementation progress and celebrate success toward towards the targets. The meetings will be hosted by different signatory cities. Ang akong pangutana, signatory ba ang atong dakbayan sa mga panatigom or paktah?
Okay, ah Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya?
As I have mentioned, Madam Presiding Officer, the Berlin Pact is a a result of the Montreal Pledge or commitment which was ah ah done in the 2022. In other words, since it is the effect, we are a participate, ah a participant to to this ah pact, Madam Presiding Officer. And ah as regards ah the the meeting, I understand when the Berlin Pact was enacted, it was through webinar. So we can participate and there is coming this Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, ah also webinar, Madam Presiding Officer.
So everybody is welcome to join?
Yes, yes, it's an open
In this pact?
Yes.
What is this pledge?
We can view, we can participate.
What do you mean by pledge, this word pledge?
We we are committed to comply with ah the ah with the common goals of ah the ah the the sub-national governments and cities and provinces who are willing to endeavor to improve the environment in their respective
So, so meaning different host, different countries will be ah
Yes, yes.
You join, so you can go?
It was just hosted by Berlin, that is why it's called Berlin.
Yeah, so the next one is where?
Because it was hosted by Montreal.
Where's the next one?
I do not know, ah for the 2024.
They always, they always inform?
I was, the 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 literature was forwarded to me by ah the ah the Clendro, the Clendro Office.
Ah, okay, okay.
Because ah I was asked by the city mayor to represent him in this ah three-day program, webinar program.
Ah, okay, okay.
And ah that's why I I I am sharing this as a matter of a call for everyone to participate.
So, anybody can participate at the webinar? One more?
Pero sa pagka-karoon, dilip pagi-ingon nga formal kitang na nakapirma signatory sa mobile impacta.
Ang pledge, we we pledge, we pledge, the city mayor has pledged. He also pledged in the cities with nature. It's an international organization that is a co-host of the entire ah actually, this is a United Nations program, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, okay.
Co-hosted by several countries and ah international NGOs.
Okay, thank you very much, very good. One more, one more, last. Councilor Bernice Sparsha?
That's why, Madam Chair, maybe magsabot That's why, Madam Chair, maybe magsabot me sa Committee on Environment Kamitanan, nga mas mayo kay pledge sa money para ma-strengthen pa me. Maybe we could make an ordinance about this para gud ma-urge na to, o mabuhat gud na to angay na to mabuhat for this, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Bernice Parsa. So, no more comments, let us proceed. Majority of floor Leader Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Okay, so let's go to our business today. Item number one, resolution, proposed resolution number 2023-433, returning to omnibus motion, item one and two.
Omnibus approval for item one, two, and three. Item one is proposed resolution number 2023-433, returning to the Sangguyang Kapataan of barangay number 11, the city's resolution number 2023-003, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 324,742 pesos. Item two is proposed resolution number 2023-434, returning to the Sangguyang Kapataan of barangay number 28, the city's resolution number 2023-001, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 338,820 pesos. Item number three is proposed resolution number 2023-435, returning to the Sangguyang Kapataan of barangay number 32, the city's resolution number 2023-01, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 500,252 pesos, with information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. Committee sponsors, Committee on Sports and Youth Development, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Jan Seno be recognized?
Councilor Jan Michael Seno, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. Once again, Madam Presiding Officer, considering that it's gone through the local finance committee, I so move for its approval.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item four. Item number four is proposed resolution number 2023-436, accrediting the here-in enumerated Civil Society Organizations, CSOs, for purposes of their membership in the Committee on People's Organization of the City Development Council pursuant to ordinance number 14334-2022 to eat. Number one, DIF Association of Misamis Oriental, DAMOR Incorporated; two, Tignapuluan Environmental Conservation and Communal Garden Association; three, BESFA, Bayanga Integrated Social Forestry Farmers Association Incorporated. Committee sponsors, Committee on Planning, Research, and Innovation, and People's Organization Accreditation, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized?
Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, you're recognized.
I so move for its approval.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item number five.
Item number five is proposed resolution number 2023-437, adapting the order of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BRK's number 2022-14 entitled, Roberto P. Cabaring Makilala Tribal Chieftain, Complainant versus Punong barangay Franco Arum Motano of barangay Dansulion, respondent for violation of indigenous peoples' rights act April 8371. Dismissing the seed case due to the affidavit of the assistance executed by the complainant and that both parties thereof have agreed to settle their differences amicably. Committee sponsors, Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I move, Madam Chair, to approve resolution number 2023-437?
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number six. Item six is proposed resolution number 2023-438, adapting the order of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BRK's number 2022-10 entitled, Mr. John Joseph Toten, Complainant versus Punong barangay Amorji Sanchez of barangay Macasandig, respondent for racism, breach of katarungan pambarangay laws and rules, and violation of data privacy. Dismissing the seed case for lack of merit to sanction the respondent administratively based on the allegations against him. Committee sponsors, Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor Jose Pepe S. Abou Jr. be recognized?
Councilor Attorney Jose Abou, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2003-438.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item seven.
Item seven is proposed resolution number 2023-439, adapting the order of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BRK's number 2022-09 entitled, Mr. Adrian Mar A. Matela, Mr. Pepe II M. Asoy, Mr. Kerwin William I. Walag, Mr. Alihu G. Ilugon III, Mr. Bowie S. Mangotara, and Mr. Rene M. Locavan, Complainants versus Punong barangay Edwin E. Mikabani, Punong barangay of barangay Balulang, respondent for usurpation of official function, abuse of power, serious misconduct, prejudicial to the best interest of service, graft, and craft practices, dismissing the seed case for lack of merit.
May I request that Councilor Jose Pepe S. Abou Jr. be recognized?
Councilor Attorney Pepe Abou, you're recognized.
I likewise move for the approval of said proposed resolution.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item eight.
Item eight is proposed resolution 2023-440, conforming to and confirming determination of the memorandum of agreement, MWA, entered into by and between the city government of Cagayan Dioro and the Tourism Infrastructure and Enterprise Zone Authority, YESA, covering the temporary operation and management by the LGUCDU of the Cagayan Dioro Convention Center, per ordinance number 14321-2022, sponsor Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request that...
Absent.
How may I request that Councilor J. Pasqual be recognized?
Councilor J. Pasqual, you're recognized.
Mayhapon, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-258.
Any second.
Two, four, four zero ba? Four, four zero, sorry. Four, four zero.
Any second.
Second.
Clarification, yes, Council Attorney James Judith, yes, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, ako mungod gepaklipakli ang mga panit sa atong agenda book. Ako bangong gitutukan, nakita na ako nga, nga'to manding katuyo pagkansilar sa mga MWA talis sa atong dakbaian, og sa kesa, na ako mungupakpaklipaklibustog sa amot mong sayo ba ko basing sa ako na siguro ang kopya. Wala may kopya sa mga MWA. Ang gusto na ako tanahon ang terms and conditions sa maubaling kontrata or MWA. Kay gingo na mo din eh, stanan nga mga sulat din eh, nga naka-attach or attachments. Puro namang gingo din eh, kamon eh, sa nga kontrata, ang MWA, pero wagin ko'y nakita nga kopya sa maubaling MWA. Ang gusto na ako tanahon, kung unsa bagit ang mga, naginon, oo, may problema, na is city legal, nag sulte, pero para sa ako, baleng konsumo, wala gitong mabasahan nga mga terms or reference or mga kondisyon eh, nakabutang sa maubaling kining memorandum of agreement. Wala nakabutang sa akong agenda book.
Wala. Yeah, pag MWA to cancel. Ah, MWA itself.
It's there in the record. Ah, okay. There is no objection, because the MWA is there.
There's a question.
Now. Determine it na na.
There's the MWA, there's the MWA, for termination.
Pero wala diya.
Ah, wala na attach.
Ah, wala na attach.
Ah, okay, okay, sige. Yeah, yeah, basis for the cancellation. Anyway, are you satisfied na agyud? Okay, sige. Anyway, thank you very much. Any second? Importante besa ginotan na ugita. Because there are things that we are not perfect, we check on the attachment, perhaps that will save it in anyway, no? Importante gapo na. Anyway, thank you very much. Any second. Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item number nine. Item number nine is proposed ordinance number 2023-258, granting one grade salary increase from SG 16 over 6 to SG 17 over 6 to Mr. Nikomedes G. Bactong, NARS 2, General Hospital, the city. Host compulsory retirement will take effect on December 7, 2023, pursuant to section 30 of RE 7305, Ornamag Nakarta for public health workers. And for this purpose, appropriating the sum of 12,430 pesos and 56 tabos from the personal services salary savings under item number 374, administrative aid 6 for the period January 1 to 22, 2023, in the 2023 annual budget of the said office to be made available for the payment of his three-month salary differential. Committee sponsors, Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor Alum Lim be recognized?
Councilor Alum Lim, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, mayhapon. Everything is in order. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-258.
Any second.
Second.
Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item 10. Item number 10 is proposed ordinance number 2023-259, appropriating the sum of 10,335,090 pesos from the item non-office economic services sector special purpose fund, land acquisition, expropriation in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the full payment of the claim for just compensation, including documentation and registration expenses of lot 826-D-3-A, which is a portion of lot 826-D-3 PSD-10-00029, covered by TCT 137-2012008142, owned by Redentor N. Salvallion, which was affected by the proposed basketball court located in barangay number 18, the city. And for this purpose, authorizing the honorable city mayor to sign the deed of absolute sale thereof. Committee sponsors, Committee on Subdivision Land and State, Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Move to approve, Madam Chair, proposed ordinance number 2023-259.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
For inclusion, move to include items 11 to 15, Madam Chair.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item 11, proposed resolution number 2023-441, approving and/or adapting the supplemental annual investment program, number 3, for CY 2023 of the city government of Cagayan Dioro. Move for its approval.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item 12, proposed resolution number 2023-442, expressing profound gratitude and commendation to Police Colonel Aaron Montalan Mandia for his invaluable services and sterling leadership as city director of Cagayan Dioro City Police Office. May I request Councilor J. Rua Pasqual be recognized?
Councilor J. Pasqual, you're recognized.
Busta police gini.
Madam Chair, I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-442.
Any second.
Second.
Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Uh, move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 13, proposed resolution number 2023-443, expressing profound gratitude and commendation to Captain Nerbun Estuliuso, Philippine Army, for his invaluable services to the residents of Cagayan Dioro City as battalion commander of the Special Forces of the 4th Infantry Division, Philippine Army. May I request that all members be the sponsor of this?
Yes. Any second. Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Okay. Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Proposal number 14, proposed resolution number 2023-444, congratulating and commending Ms. Nikki Demora for being crowned as Miss Grand Philippines 2023, last July 13, 2023, in Pasay City. Moved by all members, including the Vice Mayor.
Any second. Second, okay. Oh, manifestation, okay, okay. Okay, Councilor J. Pasqual?
Mayhapon, Madam Chair. Um, nagkwan dayto si Nikki Demora. She will be coming on the 24th to pay courtesy calls sa kuwan ng City Council and mag-attend po siya sa flag raising ceremony sa Monday. So, on the next session, hopefully, ma-welcome na to po siya.
Guapo mo ah.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor J. Pasqual. Ah, nawalan ako. Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Last item, Madam Chair, proposed resolution number 2023-445, returning to the Sangguyang Kapataan of barangay Dansulion, the city's resolution number 8, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 864,491 pesos, with information that said resolution is operative in its entirety. Uh, move by, move. May I request Councilor Jan Seno to be recognized, Madam Chair?
Councilor Michael Seno, you're recognized.
Before I make the motion, Madam Presiding Officer, you have here the Punong barangay of barangay Dansulion.
Oh, Captain Montan.
Franco Motano.
Yes, good afternoon, Captain.
Nagfollow-up siya, Madam Presiding Officer, because he will have his programs on one of the city of in Dansulion. Muna ang naghangiyo siya nga kung pwede ma-pass. And I move that this resolution be approved, considering that it's gone through the local finance committee recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There being no other matters to take up, I move for the adjournment.
Session adjourn, God bless us all.
Ang cake, ang cake ni George.